From the item on the agenda number seven is a public hearing on Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application. This is a grant that the city is applying for from the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department and is from their Land and Water Conservation Fund. And it is available, we meet the qualifications to be able to apply for this grant. There is a pretty significant amount of funding available and we are going to request an amount that exceeds the engineer's estimates on the remodel. Actually, it is at the top of what the most, the highest engineer's estimate was of all the plans that were looked at. So that's the amount we're going to request in the grant. To be clear, that doesn't mean that's what's going to be awarded and it doesn't mean that that's, the project is going to be the big grand scale project if the funding does not come in at an adequate level in order to produce that. So we still, it is a matching grant, dollar for dollar matching grant. So the highest in what you have in your hands are all the plans that were considered by the Parks and Buildings Committee and you can see the numbers associated with those plans. The $3.8 million plan was the most expensive plan that was reviewed. Even at that, I think there was, if the plan, even if we went with that plan and it didn't cost that much to have that plan bid out, we would not be obligated to that plan. We would need the matching funds however. So if 3.8 is the grant, the city would need 1.9. So the city in its available funds has approximately, what, the $307,000 in cash and $180,000 in general fund CDs. The remaining CDs that the City of Alba has are dedicated for the airport, for the rec park, for the cemetery, for the library. I can open it up, they're all dedicated elsewhere, they cannot be used for general funds. And we'd be happy to provide you the exact list of all the CDs and how much is in each CD and what they're designated for. Whoever wants one, please let us know, we'll get you that list. But the CDs for the general fund are about $180,000 and there's about $350,000-ish in The purpose of this item is, or this item on the agenda is a requirement for the grant application. The grant application is due July 31st. Staff are well underway in preparing that application. And so this is a public hearing for people to ask questions about the project as well as about the grant. If you're going to ask questions regarding the bond issue, I'd ask that you save those for the next item that we'll discuss. Actually, no, no, I take that back. You can discuss that, this one, because the bond issue is going to be necessary in order to have the matching funds needed for this grant. So I'm going to, we'll do the same, two minutes per speaker. There's no podium, but please just where you are, state who you are and we'll give you the same two minutes to speak. I will ask that everybody else, because this is less controlled of an environment, please don't engage in any side conversations. If you have something that you need to say in the public hearing, please wait until the current speaker is finished and then you will have a turn. And we'll, as long as we keep that kind of decorum, we'll have a productive hearing.
Do you want to go ahead? Okay. Mine are mostly questions, so I'll ask all of them, is that how you want me to do it?
Let's go one at a time.
Okay. I would like to know if the council members know who Scottwood Pristine Pools is?
Who Scottwood Pristine Pools is? Well, he's a contractor with Pristine Pools that's done work in our area.
Correct. Okay. Joe Don, have you spoken to Scottwood Pristine Pools about this pool?
I've spoken to him about the project, yes.
Okay.
We're not at the point of bidding that project.
Correct. Did you meet with him in the middle of May where a repair estimate was given in a private meeting?
I believe so. About the time I met with him.
Okay. Another question, isn't it true that the total cost that was given to individual contractors in individual construction, their individual discussions was the $3.8 million? And it was said that, and any council member that may have had this conversation can step in, I'll start over. The total cost that was given to contractors in individual discussions was the $3.8 million. Said that the $2.5 would come from the bond issue and that 1.3 would come out of the rainy day fund?
I don't know that that can be declared an accurate statement, but I can clarify maybe the $3.8 million. That was in Plan Number, I think it's Plan Number Six. That is the dollar amount that the engineers estimate that plan to cost. If, when looking at the project, there are a few places where the revenue can come from. The revenue can come from grants, the revenue can come from the bond issue, the revenue can come from funds that we have. In looking at that particular proposal, if I take my pencil and sharpen it and look at that proposal, I'm going to say that the city council would not pay 3.8 for that proposal and if we did, we'd probably be paying too much. The proposal includes $60,000 for a fence, the proposal includes lighting that we likely don't need to take care of, we've got some things that don't need to be included in that, but when the engineer estimates it, it gives us the full project, what it would cost if we didn't have it. So other council members can answer if they like, but I don't believe any of us said that to any contractors that we will be needing this to come in at 3.8 or anything like that. The bond issue is for 2.5 because we believe that with the funds that we have available, along with the bond issue, that that can be accomplished.
My last question for this part is, since Joe Don had that meeting, I want to know if it was said during that meeting that an engineering firm is not necessary for a pool that is constructed or renovated where a current pool exists?
I know that that was their opinion.
We don't, we get stuff engineered. I mean, and here's the thing, it's for the protection of the taxpayer. If we, none of us are experts in building pools and likely there aren't very many in this audience here or in our community that's expert in building a pool of this magnitude. The engineer's estimate, same thing with a water tower, same thing with a sewer line, same thing with any of our commercial buildings, the engineer's estimates helps us protect our taxpayers. Because if we don't know what the standard costs are that these engineers experience when they do similar projects in our area, we don't have any good way of gauging whether the contract bids come in at an acceptable level. That being said, the engineer's estimate is only an estimate. Sometimes those are going to be high, sometimes they're going to be low. We have had multiple instances in the past few years where the engineer's estimate was high and we came in under that budget line. We also have had a couple instances where the engineer's estimate was low and we came in over budget. This one, we can look at some of the aspects of this project and tell you, I know a fence isn't going to cost us 60 grand, I know that. But I can't tell you how much a pool is going to cost. Can't tell you how much the electrical is going to cost for a pool. So we will rely heavily on the engineer's estimates, but we also take into consideration that they are only estimates. And no project will be awarded without bids. So if the, and I will add that if the bond issue is approved and the bids come in over the bond issue, the bond issue won't happen. I mean, the council could try to find the money elsewhere, but unless we have a guarantee of the funding, we won't award the bids. And there won't be anything to pay back.
I'll say the other thing that the engineer's estimate does, and we ran into this at the ARC, is gives us, gives the contractors proper guidelines on if we need geopiering so it doesn't sink again, if we need what kind of concrete they can use. That's all in the engineer's estimate that we send out to the contractors, in the engineering plans.
To clarify, it's the engineer specifications which we don't have at this time. Not yet. But the engineer includes that in his estimate when he makes those, what materials are going to be used. So it helps us later on to solidify the bids, we know what we're getting.
Once again, your protection. ARC, we had to get engineer to come out so that we could put the shade structures up. You know, they required, I don't remember what it was, 24, 36 inches deep and it knocked out a lot of our bidders because they weren't going to do that to put in our shade structures. We ended up having to get somebody that was willing to cut concrete, dig down and put piers in. So the shade structure would be safe.
I need just a little bit of clarification on the rainy day fund. I'm hearing a couple different things. Is, what makes up the rainy day fund?
So, and Joe Don step in if I misfeared, but the, it's our stabilization fund. Presently, our stabilization funds are all held in CDs. The CDs are that $2.1 million in investments that we have. The CDs for the airport total about $750,000.
About.
The CDs at the recreation complex total about $500,000. About.
About. Same thing for the Economic Development Fund, for the scholarships.
Scholarship, yep. And, and so the stabilization fund is there and it was approved six, seven years ago.
Uh...
It was approved before I became mayor, but we didn't fund it until my first year.
It was approved the year before you became mayor.
So the stabilization fund is designed that if there were ever an event where the city was not able to collect revenue, something catastrophic happened, state isn't sending us our sales tax check, we're not able to receive utility billing, that we would still be able to pay for the things that needed to happen to operate our city for a period of time.
So you're saying that the money in this fund that is earmarked for the airport and the rec park and the Economic Development Fund could be used for operations?
No.
Or could be used for this project?
It could be used for operations in those entities, but not operations of the city.
Okay, okay. I always misunderstand.
The city's operations would have to, we can't take money from the airport, we can't take money from the rec park. There's some of our smaller, the library, the library's funds all come from, what doesn't come from donations comes from the general fund. Same with the cemetery, what doesn't come from donations and fees comes from the general fund. And so in those instances, yeah, there would be some general fund money that could be used, but it's insignificant.
So would you clarify exactly what would be available in addition to those monies that we've just talked about that are earmarked?
In addition to the CDs, the stabilization funds?
In addition to the money that is earmarked for the, it looks like to me it's kind of is separate. The airport, the...
You got the CD list?
I mean, if you can't use the airport money and the rec park money and the, then what monies, what monies can you use?
Just, you said I made that.
I mean, I just...
I think it's $180,000.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
But that would, that would require council action to revoke the resolution that established the stabilization fund because this is...
No, it requires, if you think you separate... To use the money out of the stabilization fund, it requires a seven-eighths vote of the council and a declaration of emergency, such as tornado, loss of income.
Gotcha. Okay. I just, I want to understand. Thank you for...
What was your name, ma'am?
Jane McDermott.
Kelly, I think your spin question too about like asking through the general fund, just put it in general fund, but that's just a common, it goes in there, but then it's...
Actually, it's a bond, just like our revenue bond that we have for the broader projects. It's going to be held in a...
In a trust, in a trusty bank. And then we draw, actually draw down money out of it as we use it, as we acquire invoices for the project.
So we're not just going to spend it on whatever?
They never go into the general fund.
And we have to turn those invoices into the trusty bank and if they don't align with the project, then they don't get charged back out. We end up paying them.
It's also audited, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Every year.
I have a question on your comments of... My name's Patrick Dooley. The square footage of the deck and the square footage of the pool, is the deck itself the entire, the entire structure with the pool or is that added on to the cost of everything?
The deck itself is the, that would be the entire deck area to include the pool.
Okay. That's the only question I have for you.
I'm Jessica Green and I was trying to keep up online and stuff with everything that's been going on, but my question is in regards to the email between Joe Don and Joe Scribner. And when it talked about refurbishing the current pool, you stated $1.6 million, but then somewhere else it stated that it's going to be like $2.6 million to refurbish what we already have. Can you clarify on the breakdown of what the current cost is to refurbish what we already have?
The pool is approximately $1.6 million. The bathhouse is approximately 700, uh, $675,000.
According to the one estimate.
According to the estimates that we've been given. And the bathhouse is part of the rehabilitation plan for the entire complex. So we would be talking about the entire pool complex.
And that's the health department's idea. So does that mean...
That's modifying this building for ADA accessibility. The majority of that is modification of this building for ADA accessibility.
So does that mean that demolishing this and rebuilding a new one is going to be cheaper when added with the remodeling of the current bathhouse? Is that what you're kind of getting at or is it just comparatively the same?
No, it's comparatively similar. The way I've explained it to people is if, let's say that you have a car that you've been driving for, you know, five, 10 years or whatever, and that car now has a value of, or that your car comes in to need, you know, maintenance or repairs in an amount that is close to what it would cost to buy a new similar vehicle. So if you're looking at $20,000 of repairs, say, for a vehicle that you can buy in a working condition, similar age and everything else for $22,000, many people, not all people, many people would decide to go ahead and spend 10% more and get another vehicle that's not a vehicle that's been repaired from a broken state. So what we have is a pool that is in a, according to the state health department, is in a broken state. The repairs to bring the setting foundation up, skim off the gutters to where they need to be, to be leveled, and then bring the, the south end here into ADA compliance, along with the bathhouse, and I think, we looked at a lot of different plans. These numbers, I'm not worried about the specifics of these numbers because these are only estimates, but it's approximately $2.6 million, 2.5, 2.6, somewhere in there. The highest estimate we got on a proposed new pool, tearing this pool out, remodeling the pool and bathhouse, was $3.8 million. When I've looked at that estimate and pulled out what I think that we'll have in reality, based on just my experience with different types of construction, and it's, it doesn't include the aquatics part of it, but it includes fences, it includes concrete, it includes, you know, dirt work and stuff like that, based on my judgment, I get that number around, down to around 2.8, 2.9 million. So I can be wrong. The estimate could be wrong. I could be right, the estimate could be right. I think we're looking at a situation where the cost to repair this pool is only 10 or 15% less than it would be to tear this out and have a brand new pool with all new internal functions and everything, using the equipment that we just purchased to be able to open this year.
Now, is that, am I understanding this correctly, that even if the bond passes, that there is no guarantee that the pool will be open next year?
We can't guarantee that. And the reason we can't guarantee that, there's a few reasons. Number one, we don't know what the bids are. If the bids come in higher than we can afford with bond issue, with grants, with donations, if the bids come in higher than we can afford, this, I would not recommend that this council approve moving forward on paying for something that we don't have, the finances already figured out. Weather, all kinds of different things can delay a construction schedule. We are dealing with a tight timeframe to be able to keep this pool open through the end of this season and then the day it's closed, we should have bids in hand, close.
Be close.
We'll be close to having bids to be able to approve in that September council meeting. We're hoping to have bids by the September council meeting. And then generally, we're looking at, you know, hopefully not a long period of time for the contractors to start, but they're not going to start the next day, more than likely, once we approve the bids. So it'd be nice, but it's not, I mean, we're usually 30 to 60 days on...
We're going to be at least 30 days out before they start. Before they start turning dirt, we're probably looking at the beginning to end, sometime in December.
All for a pool that will only be open three months out of the year at best.
That's true.
And I would like to thank Daniel Winters and stuff for all of his online answers and stuff that he's been giving, a lot of citizens and stuff in town that have had a lot of concerns. And he's done an excellent job on Facebook and stuff, responding to people and being very quick to come up with some answers and stuff on all of this. So thank you very much.
I agree.
One thing too, a lot of times we don't have control overs that our lifeguards, our college kids, they go back to school, we start losing that workforce and that's affected us in the past where we get into August and instead of actually trying to stay open, we lose our lifeguards and so we aren't able to stay open just because of that issue. I mean, we're going to try to stay open if we can, but just by the lifeguards.
The delays that could cause, the other delay that could cause us from opening in May is that we discover things that we were unaware of when we start demolition processes.
And getting the health inspector out here to approve it by then. I mean, we've, but that's what our trouble was this year. You've got to have that health inspector come out and do all the approving before you can do anything to open it up.
Other questions?
What exactly are they saying? It's not kosher with this pool.
Foundation in the north end is settled.
Nothing town has.
I'm not here to answer questions about the rest of town. So the gutter along the pool needs to be level in order for the water to scup up over and for chemical treatment of the pool to function properly. That is the most expensive item, the foundation. So repairing the foundation to the existing pool would be the most expensive part of moving forward with this current design. The other thing that is currently out of compliance is our Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility. So there is a, the proper grade for ADA is one inch to one foot slope for ramps. We also, at three foot deep, are a little too deep for people in wheelchairs to enjoy our shallow end. The kiddie pool is out of compliance because of the way it drains.
And because of the filtration system. It's got to be filtered, it's got to have be on a separate filtration system than what the main pool is.
And the two things that we fixed this spring were that the drain water from the pool has to be put into the sanitary sewer system and that the chemical system for the pool has to be an automated system and no longer be manual.
I have some pictures, if anybody wants to look at it, what Joe Don has that shows what it looks like inside.
We can go down, that was one of the issues is the filtration tanks that are in the, in the system, in the pool right now and in use are more than likely original equipment, severely rusted, and that was another issue that they brought out. Only having one basket for testing areas, cracking along in several locations in the concrete in the pool. The chlorinate, the chlorine was not proper.
This is from 2018.
Yes. There are several other smaller items that have been corrected, we had to correct before we could even open up this year. There were just little bitty things here and there that we just needed to rehang things. Buy, buy a few new life preserver rings that have been taken care of.
Oh, this ADA, one inch per foot, going to be throughout the whole pool? How long's the pool? Are we going to have a four foot deep pool?
No, it's just for the certain area. And it's different in each of the designs that were handed out, it's a different compliance area. Have to be a certain person. Yeah, I'm going to let you speak unless you guys get out of hand.
Jane McDermott, I, I think it would be, I hope it passes. I appreciate all of you, I appreciate the work that you do and I, I think the value of upgrading our city is huge and so I want to thank you for all of that. I do think it would be sad to pass the bond issue and then not be able to build it. Is there any way to back into that and be able to build what we could afford? Be able to say we have 2.5 million? What would 2.5 million bill for us? Is that a thought or...
That isn't.
When we bid the project out, we will line out and bid it. And that way, if there are things that we can live without for right now and we don't get any other funding besides the, the geo bond issue if it passes, if that's the only funding we get, then there is things that we would be able to maybe cut out for this year that aren't required and, but we would build with the expectation of acquiring them in the future to put them in use.
So let's say bond, everybody votes yes, bond passes, we, we opt out for the most expensive $3.8 million. Get this place tore out, we start building everything and we run out of money.
I, I, we, I wouldn't advise us to approve $3.8 million.
If we didn't have the 3.8 in hand, we're not going to.
Well, let's just, I am, I am committed to keeping this as close to 2.5 million as possible. And still meet the health department's requirements.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, we get, we get to 2.5, everything is being built, nothing is ready, nothing is able to be turned on because we have run out of funds because the project has overspent, or the building contractor, whoever the engineer comes in to build this has spent all our money and now we need more money to fix the rest of it to go on.
If they, we'll, we'll seek hard bids and we'll seek liquidated damages because we do have a timeframe that needs to be met. So when we seek hard bids and we seek liquidated damages, whatever they bid, they're telling us that they can do the scope of the project in the time that's allotted. If they don't perform that, then we will hold them liable for, for not meeting that.
And doing city work, they have to have a bond that backs it up.
I have a question. This was an idea that just popped in my head, I could not come prepared. So if this sounds like a crazy question, just chalk it up as that and we'll move on. As far as doing the entire site here, I mean, there are a lot of people from out of town As far as doing the entire site here, I mean, there are a lot of people from out of town that come to the rec park. I know that building the pool out there is probably not the best option. Is this a possible option, doing a smaller version here and doing a splash pad out there? Can we set, can we-
That's part of the red board, that's in the plans for the rec park already. The rec park has a dog park, a splash pad, Wolfmore Fields-
If some of those companies, instead of building a humongous pool like this, I know that it's great, but can, the people that are coming to the rec park are gonna stop what they're doing in the middle of their tournament and come swimming, but they might stop what they're doing and do a splash pad, it would still be the same.
And the new one's not gonna be this week?
How many square feet is it now?
Square, this, this pool's square footage is about 15,000, about 15,000 square feet, about 500,000 gallons of water.
So, it'd be considerably reduced in size, also down to help us on our expenses and chemicals.
And is a chemical-free pool an option, or is that something that's not an option as far as the city goes?
That would be an option. We'll have to have some sort of chemi, there's different ways to chemically treat it.
There's ozonation, that's, I mean-
There's different ways to treat the pool, you can get a saltwater filtration system to treat it, you can do a tablet chlorination. We have chosen gas chlorination because that's what our staff is the most familiar with, with the well field, is gas chlorination. But a ga, a gas chlorination, as far as the chemical cost, is the cheapest.
Right.
That's, that's the reason we do that.
Do you test for chlorinated byproducts here specifically?
We, we test for chlorine, the chlorine levels have to be at a certain level, and pH has to be at a certain level.
Chlorinated byproducts, like trinol and other things?
No, we test for chlorine, and we test the pH balance as required by the health department.
Speaking to the capacity of the pool, the new capacity, I think-
Can we go back just a second? Treatment, I don't believe ozonation would work because it's an open body, so, I, but my understanding is, when you run it through an ozone, whatever it is, it can still be contaminated from the surface, but the chemicals will continue to treat as long as there's chemicals in the pool, but the ozone only happens when it goes through the line, is that correct?
Unless you're using it through a circulation system, that will keep the ozone going, and the ozone will eventually dissipate. I mean, all ozone gases, exactly what happens whenever lightning strikes, I mean, so it's-
You know, I, I'm gonna say that all of these options-
I'm just asking.
They're possibilities.
Yeah.
We went with what we thought would be the most cost-effective, and still meet health department standards. Okay, sorry Megan.
Okay. So, Councilman Winters addressed the capacity of the new swimming pool is 390. I know that's not a concern for the typical day of attendance for the pool, but just to give an idea, because I know we couldn't get real concrete numbers on what the current is, and why it's a concern for me to not repair this size of pool instead of putting a new one in. This year for the 4th of July event, we had 517 swimmers. Last year for the 4th of July event, we had 600. So, that's one of our biggest events, attendance-wise, for people to town. I'm sure if there was the possibility of staying open long enough to ride through car show, you have another event, but there could be the possibility of a lot of people being out, I don't know what the months are, I know September's hot enough, we'd probably still swim, but that's another possibility for people to get in this pool, for the new pool.
I'd say those, those numbers are total people that have entered the pool, that's not necessarily the total capacity of the pool in any given moment, because that was the question we asked.
The, the total capacity of the new pool, the way we have designed it in concept number six, to be in the pool at one time is 390 people.
That does not include people-
That does not include the people that are out on the deck, or around, or anywhere that is in the pool. And then, then we are required to have one lifeguard on duty for every 25 people in the ward.
I'm assuming that you guys have been in a cost comparison to the stuff in, what were, the, what is it, the suns and springs, Crystal Beach?
Crystal Beach.
Crystal Beach. How, I mean, cost comparison, this, what is, what was-
It was constructed in 2009.
Uh-huh, and how much, like, what was their budget?
I, I don't know what their budget is, the scope of their project was different than ours. You know, our plans were to maintain a swimming area, their plans do not, they don't have swimming in-
And I, as a parent, loved that concept, because, I mean, you can still swim and touch at the same time.
Yeah, that does, yeah.
The, the, the concept was similar, but bigger in scope, and, because I don't know if you've got numbers on that or not.
I've got, well, I don't have a number for Crystal Beach, or whatever, whatever they've got in under, I think that's the right name. I've got some numbers on some other facilities. St. Francis, Kansas, completed a project in 2017, they had a construction cost of 200, uh, 2 million, $135,000. It included one meter dri, diving board, a three, a three-meter diving board, a tot slide, a water basketball go, and a turf lounge. It was six, 6,000 square feet, there was 6,600 square feet, a six-lane lap area with shade structures. The closest one to us, let me find it, it was in Medford. It was completed in 2015, it was 3,500 square feet, had a diving area, had a kiddie slide, shade, a couple of shade structures, a couple of spray features, and a bathhouse, and it was just over a million dollars. It was half the size of what we're talking about. CDO Texas, completed in 2013, 3,900 square feet, an open flume water slide, a rain drop, a diving area, shade structures, spray features, and a new bathhouse, 1.2 million dollars. Halsted, Kansas, three, 3,900 square feet, open flume water slide, one meter diving board, tot slide, spray features, sun shade structures, or shade structures and a bathhouse, 1.3 million dollars. So, I've got several here, and that was just from Carruthers Construction Company. And I've talked to another company that is more than, that has other cost, uh, cost similar.
I just mentioned the Woodward one, just because I was familiar with it, and it's nice, I mean, it's, it's a great place, and the attendance never seems slim, so, I don't know if that's why.
Can you tell us what the percent of the commission that's taken by this engineering term would be for this project, for doing a $1 project, because I'm sorry, it comes out speaking?
We have held the costs down, or got commitments on the cost. I believe, I'm not certain, but I believe the engineering costs are gonna be about eight percent, just off the top of my head.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Green? There, uh, there's no engineering cost in any of these, so you're gonna have to add eight percent to this?
No, no, no. The engineered cost is gonna be in the-
It should be included in line one.
Mobilization, bonds, and insurance.
There's more than engineering, but that is, it is included in anything.
You just cited some up in Kansas that had a 3900 square feet. The one here that we showed, it's two, 2,700,000, is about 4,000 square feet. How come we're at a billion dollars total now?
Well, we're, the one we're looking at is 6,400 square feet, and it's got a 12,812 square foot of deck.
That's 3.8, 600,000.
To, that's, that's, right, that's the one, that's the project that the Parks and Building Committee has elected to try to pursue at this time.
Again, those are not going to be our numbers.
I understand, but you're, you're estimating it at that. If we only got two and a half million to spend, how you gonna build one for us?
We're not, we're not. Those are the estimates. We, we have to have it engineered, the engineers have to spec it, the contractors have to bid it. We don't know what the contractors are going to bid until they bid it. We can't ask a contractor in advance to give us a bid, because then all of a sudden, they, they can't bid the project when it comes out, because we've given them an inside line on, you know, what should be a competitive bidding process, so-
We did have a discussion with one.
Not anybody that's gonna bid it.
Well, they were lying, they could bid it, but the, but the discussion was informational only, the same as-
We didn't ask them for a bid.
The same as the discussions with the engineers.
Wait.
There is a little bit of confusion. Several times, or a couple times, you've mentioned proposal six, and the statistic you just said of 66 square feet, we don't have confidence in that.
Is number six in there?
Number six doesn't matter.
It's the pool payment, I mean, it's on the back page.
Oh, yeah. The image is not included. Because we had that here, the reason it wasn't included is because we had it here.
We'll go get it.
Hey, while they're talking, guys, we sit down, I don't know how many meetings, and we put all these five out, and we argue. You know me, I'm not an arguer, but if I argue, I wanna win, but, you know, but some of these just didn't make sense for Alba, you know? Why put so much cement out there? Let's make this to where the kids can just walk. I grew up in this pool, hate to say this, I grew up in this pool, my kids grew up in this pool, this cement gets hot. So, we tried to do away with a lot of these. You can see in some of these images, there's a lot of cement, why pay for cement?
Also in Concepts Two and Four, there was going to be a significant amount of backfill that was gonna have to be done. All this white area-
Yeah.
Was going to have to be backfilled. That's one of the things that's gonna help keep our costs down, is we already have a hole dug.
Yeah.
We don't have to come in here with backfills and dirt work, when you do dirt work, you're gonna dig a big hole, so.
And there's a lot of options available later on, you know, like you said, the lazy river thing. We had to fight Joe Don on that lazy river, he wanted it in this one. No, let's wait, you know, let's get a pool built, then maybe put a lazy river in, you know? A lot of other things that we had to leave out because it made the cost that much more.
The other thing I would like to point out, I don't think any of, anybody else has mentioned, and it's a big discussion among the council members, is that our aim is 2.5.
Right.
So, the bond issue, make sure we have the payment. If we get $500,000 in donations, we pay back $500,000 to the geo bond. It ends quicker, that is our goal. So, we, we have to be able to fund the project before we can bid it, and we can't ask for donations till we know how much it's gonna cost.
And Alex is working on that grant, you know? Hopefully, we can get that grant there again.
And the misconception that we can just spend the money on whatever we want is absolutely erroneous.
Would you talk, given to just putting the pool inside this pool?
Yes.
That would save you all the demolition, all the-
Yes, I mean, you guys talked about that.
I did, I couldn't figure out.
I, I, I think a combination of mobilizing a crew to do that, because we still have problems with the filtration systems and, and so much more of the pool, it's not just the shell of the pool.
And it's, it's-
And you would have to shore up the foundation, or you still, you're gonna still have problems.
You have to do the foundation.
Can't add more weight to a bad foundation, so you're gonna repair costs and construction costs in there.
And if you look at some of these pictures, oh my goodness, I think they have been in there since 1930 something. I didn't come in here in 1930 and swim, I promise you. Don't say anything, I think that's really bad.
I didn't wanna say, I didn't wanna go. I argued with you in Parks and Building, I learned my lesson.
I know, you did. You know, it's, we tried to make it to where the kids would have the most fun, we wouldn't blister their lumps, we didn't wanna do anything, you know? Grandma here, I want my kids out here on the cement.
The other side about this plan that we really liked was that the, the splash pad will be outside of the fence of the pool.
Right.
So, the splash pad will be open longer, it'll be open later, it'll be open earlier, it should have a timer on it, that's our goal, is that you can walk up, crank it for 30 minutes, let your kids play, go home, water shuts off, so we save water. But it's outside of the fence of the pool, so you don't have to pay to get in the pool to go to the splash pad. I have little, little ones, they don't swim. I want a splash pad for them to go to play in, I wanna be able, them to be able to enjoy the water without making a mud hole in my yard every year.
And we, and we received a lot of feedback, and, and it may be representative of the people in here or not, but there's a lot of people that wanna see a splash pad as part of this project.
I have a statement that I've had, and many, many people ask me to make, and so I just wanna make that, and you guys can respond as you wish. If the bond issue fails, it's my hope, and the hope of many others, of city council members, take that under advisement and do not implement an increase elsewhere, the bond that's doing out in the old pool.
There's only one option, yeah, one option we have to do unilaterally without citizen approval, and that would be a rate increase, and I can't speak for everyone on council, but I, I'm gonna say that I personally would greatly oppose that, I opposed that in the beginning. We've already done that, and our rates, I think, are at a level that we don't really wanna go any higher. So, I, I don't believe that there are other options that would be an increase to the citizens outside of this, this bond issue.
Any, any other?
Without that, anyway.
Correct. Anything that's gonna require a tax or a fee is going to come back for the people, and you guys can decide. Now, I, Shelley-
My only problem is, I just, I don't know that I feel like it's fair that it's only probably only funding. I mean, I know I wouldn't vote for a rate increase, but, I mean-
I was moving into that bill.
Surely somebody is thinking.
Me.
If the city thinks everybody should pay.
Yeah, not just-
Probably just bring that in.
Say, one at a time, people. One at a time, Shelley.
Or a rate increase, I wouldn't be for that either, but it would be the fair way, I guess, and everybody would pay, and I'm not, I just, I feel like people that have several properties-
So, the biggest bonus-
You know, I don't know what the fairest way is, but it doesn't-
The biggest bonus to the geo bond is, it's sunset automatically, okay? Your, your, your street view was passed before I was on council, not sunset, it's gonna go forever, okay? Your rate increases tend to go forever, your tax increases tend to go forever. This geo bond is 10 years, it's gone in 10 years unless you vote it back in.
So, the other bond that they, that was approved in Alabama, what, with this college and all that, it dropped off, right? Or it is dropping up, is there one that's-
There's not any current bonds, the only other-
That's what I'm saying, it ended, so it's really not, we're already used to that.
The tax and the living stuff.
The, the school bond issues.
School bonds have been paid off.
Yeah.
It's the same concept.
Alba's school, not me.
Okay, the school bonds, the school bonds.
Hey, I know we're not fighting with each other, but we're having too many people talk, and I didn't wear my hearing aids.
You said that earlier.
One at a time.
No, the school bonds have been paid off, which means they're done, and this would be the, just like a substitute in for, so really, there's not a difference, I mean, it's just plus one, minus one.
We're, I, I don't prefer to look at this as a one or the other. Schools are important also.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, I see what you're saying, though.
So, right.
It's something that's, yeah, being taken out just for-
So, funding, design, there are multiple different ways to fund this, there are multiple different ways to design this. At the end of the day, the city council felt like most of the people in our community wanted to see us with a cool aquatic facility. We have had enough conversations with our constituents, we have had surveys, we have enough information where we felt like the people wanted a pool. Do we feel like everybody agreed on what that pool would look like, or how it should be paid for? No. Now, that being the case, what voters have to decide is whether or not they will support this in order for a pool to happen in our community. This is the proposal that's on the table. We did feel like the, the geo bond with the property tax was going to be a stable means of repaying quickly and getting it off the table. We felt like property tax is too unstable.
Sales tax.
That's what I meant. Sales tax was too unstable.
Thank you.
Because we've seen it fluctuate greatly over five and 10-year- Because we've seen it fluctuate greatly over five and 10-year periods. So, there was no way to guarantee then how long that would last either. And like with the other council members have said about fees and rate increases, that's not, that's not how you do this. That's not how you do a project like this, in our opinion. But if the people are willing to pay the taxes to do it, then that's how you do it. Personally, I have no preference over property or sales tax. I know that I'm gonna pay more with a property tax. I know that I will probably pay less with a sales tax. There are other people in the community that would not be the same. So, there are going to be businesses in the community that don't wanna see a sales tax. But there are also businesses in the community that don't wanna see a property tax. So, at the end of the day, if we're going to see some sort of taxation, is this acceptable? Is it acceptable? I'm not asking you if it's preferred, because none of us want more taxes. None of us want more taxes. Is it acceptable in order to meet the goal of having a pool for our community? Is the plans that are presented, are they acceptable? Are they everything you want? No. Are they everything we want? No. Are, is it, some of it's more than what we want, some of it's less than what we want? We're not going to, in a town the size of Alva, and we probably wouldn't in a town the size of Burlington, come to consensus that everybody agrees what our pool would look like. It's not going to happen. So, are the plans acceptable? Is this something that we can accept in order to continue to have a pool for our community? Now, the facts are, the State Department of Health will not allow us to open next year or any other year without significant infrastructure repairs and system repairs to both the building and the pool. That's fact. They're not gonna, we, the only reason we got it to open this year is because we gave them a three-year plan that included the drainage stuff and the chemical systems this year. It included the major repairs to the pool next year. It included the accessibility for the bathhouse in the third year. So, that's the only reason we got to open this year, and we fulfilled our end of the bargain on that. We got the, that first-year stuff implemented. Next year's no guarantee if we don't have funding. We don't presently have the funding. And I, I know people wanna believe that they're sitting in a pocket somewhere and we can just go pull it out, but it's not. It's not there. We're hoping to get grants. We're hoping to get donations. Those are not guaranteed, and at this point, the bond issue is not guaranteed. But, the one thing that is guaranteed, without the funding, the repairs won't happen, regardless of where they come from. The next item on the agenda has, is more specifically, we've got two of these, and we can either keep going with this one and then just read the next one, but I've gotta read the next one anyway. It's acceptable, we'll go ahead and do that.
Kelly, Dr. Carmichael, you're the swimming minister in this hometown of Alva. What do you think?
I think we definitely need a pool in our community. I just don't think, and I think it needs to be here. I think it needs to be close to the park, so it's accessible for people. I would hate to see us not have a pool in our community. And I think we need to do what we have to do to get it, whatever that is.
And I can say, I did not know which way she was going when I asked her. I have not visited her. I have no idea which way she went. Thank you.
Mary.
That's fine. I'll read it later.
I wanna say that I appreciate Mrs. Hamilton, because telling is not teaching, and being told is not the same thing as being taught. And she's translating for you guys, and she's doing a great job getting, teaching your audience here on exactly what you're saying.
These guys had to teach me because I was totally out of my realm.
But I'm saying, this is valuable for what you guys do and what she's doing right now. It's extremely valuable. Educating everybody around you eliminates a lot of your problems. I think that follow-through is huge when it comes to all of these projects. I haven't heard one person say, "No, Alva doesn't use it." Not one. They, they say, "Well, but what about this project? What about this project?" But what about these other ones that we've helped? But where's the follow-through on these? You know, or if, you know...
We, we're not gonna be able to talk about other projects tonight.
Right. I'm not, I don't wanna bring that up, but I'm just saying...
I would take, you know, phone calls and, and phone numbers are not hard to find. I'll give it to everybody tonight. 748-1173.
Hey, me too.
I also think most of our numbers are on the city website.
They're on the website, yes, they're on the website.
And I promise you, if I don't know the answer, I will look it up. I'll find it. 'Cause I don't know a lot of answers.
Mr. Crenshaw.
I don't think a no vote is necessarily, we don't wanna pool. A no vote, in this case, is probably, more likely is that we just disagree with your way of trying to fund it.
I, that's fine.
And I hope, and I hope if this goes down, that you'll realize that and come back and try to fund this at a more acceptable way to the people.
In the spirit of education, we would love to, but I don't think the priorities of this board are to, this council are to neglect any longer streets, water, I mean... So, while I appreciate what you're saying, I don't know that we're going to do it with our existing revenue.
Well, but what I'm saying, you can come back, possibly finance the sales tax. I think Megan already told you that the possibility to be able to take part of existing sales taxes and convert it.
Megan stated that, but...
Yeah, I was at those meetings, guys. I think she's absolutely right. But, yeah, I think it's just that people aren't really enthused about this. My problem is, you're trying to pass ad verum tax, which has traditionally been held for schools and county business. Cities have been given the right to raise sales tax. Schools can't raise sales tax.
Guys, I'm in business. You guys, you all know it. We're fighting right now with internet grocery buying. We're fighting with people going to the doctor and overeating it and stopping over there and buying groceries. Our sales tax that we've contributed to the city of Alva, because sales go down when people go out of town. And until you can convince people to stay in town and do their shopping, those sales taxes are gonna keep going down. And that's what scares me.
And your businesses are gonna keep folding as long as they have, and that they hire taxes, which ad verum they do. Sales tax doesn't cost them money. It's just a lack of sales.
Which is gonna cut employees...
But, but your store is gonna cost you quite a bit of money to pay the ad verum taxes. Because, because one thing, businesses have to pay ad verum tax on inventory.
So, ad verum tax is gonna be, it's gonna be the person that owns $100,000 worth of market value, it's gonna be assessed at a lower value than that. I'm learning all these things. But, what the person with $100,000 market value property is going to pay is gonna be roughly $100 to $110 a year. So, that's $100,000. If I have a $20 million business, which would be one of the biggest businesses in our community, the hospitals are $20 million business, the banks are probably $20 million businesses, $20 million times that, oh crap, I started with math numbers that I'm not gonna be able to calculate when I'm sweating this bad. But, I think it comes to a point where a $20 million business with 5,000 customers, 'cause I did the math the other night, is gonna roughly need to get about $4 per customer per year to make up the increase in their tax burden. $4 per customer per year.
We don't have $20 million.
So, if you take that, and whether it's $20 million or whether it's $10 million, or whether it's $1 million, or whether it's half a million, is proportionate to the size of the business. So, if a $20 million business with 5,000 customers is only gonna need to get $4 from each of their customers a year, the rest of the businesses, I, it will be a burden that they pass on to their consumers, but it should not be overly burdensome.
Since you missed mentioning the hospital, is, are there gonna be any businesses that are exempt from this, like the water stuff? Anybody exempt from the property taxing?
Only the one, county assessor decides who pays taxes. City of Alva does not decide who pays property taxes.
Another concern, I know landlords are concerned. I know that businesses are concerned. These numbers are hard for us to understand and accept what they're gonna look like until we get some round numbers. Same for you guys. We gotta wait on bids before we have some final things. We're all panicking because we don't have any final numbers. So, we can take your $100 a year increase for a $100,000 house, but it's still not concrete yet.
It is. I'll give you concrete. This property value is, the net assessed property value is assessed at 11.5%. So, whatever your value is, you multiply that by 11.5%. So, if you are in a $100,000 property, your net assessed value's gonna be 11,500. If it's a home and you have a homestead exemption, you'll take another $1,000 off that. So, there's a difference. You're either gonna be 10...
A thousand off the assessed value.
Thousand off the net assessed value. So, you can, those are the numbers. You can do the math on your homes. And it's going to be at 10 mils, which it won't be 10 mils, it'll be just under at the most.
At the three highest years, the highest peak is 9.86. Okay? So, it goes...
I think it's, I think it's higher than that, but it's not 10. But if, we're using round numbers.
8.6, pretty close.
Pretty close.
He's wetting up here, guys. He's hot.
10 mils is 1 one-thousandth of the net assessed property value. Actually, it's 10 one-thousandths of the net assessed property value. So, on a $100,000 home in Alva, it's going to cost roughly $105 a year if you have a homestead exemption.
So, where the landlords are concerned and the, and the business owners are concerned, I'm concerned for young families and people moving to town and all of the people selling their homes. Because I have seen, and there's probably others here that can attest to that, but I have seen young families not be able to secure a mortgage because of $5 a year being priced out of that from insurance or from property tax estimates. And so, that can be $5, that can be $15, but $100 extra a year on a $100,000 home, that could knock a huge amount of people out based on...
Anything worth having, people get to decide what the cost is to pay. You guys get to decide what the cost is to pay.
But we're essentially deciding to keep young families potentially out of Alva.
Not necessarily.
Somebody could go get a DUI, and they need $1,000 to pay their ticket. They're gonna find $1,000 to pay that ticket.
Well, the problem with mortgages, it's federally regulated, and so they can't...
Well, you understand what I'm saying. If they want them, if they want it bad enough, they're gonna find the money to do it. That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm telling the city.
Where's it gonna come from, though? Are we gonna give her the $400,000 here scholarship to give her...
All right.
The city is more restricted. I know exactly what you're talking about, 'cause I have a customer in mind that just got a second job to do that very thing. Build up enough down payment to buy a house. And I think that's what Allison's trying to say. If, if somebody wants it bad enough, then they're gonna find an extra way to do it. Whether that's delivering pizzas. I'm a Dave Ramsey fan. But, you know, the thing is...
They said the very same thing. You're a firefighter for four days, the other three days, you go find another job. You've gotta find another job. And that's what we all have to do.
Are we gonna make a slogan that if you're gonna move into Alva to buy a $100,000 house, you should probably have a job on your day job? Make the property tax...
I don't think our, I don't think our property taxes are inflated than our surrounding here.
I just had a guy from Illinois call, and wanted to move to Oklahoma and work at the grocery store because taxes in Oklahoma and in Alva were so much smaller than where he's living in Decatur, Illinois. He said, "I've gotta get out of here." They just raised everything.
And our property taxes are low for the state of Oklahoma, and they're low for surrounding states.
They're not buying a house here. They're not buying a house somewhere else either.
So, the taxes just from in-city limits, not anybody who lives outside? So, part of like Erie Street, Holland, right, doesn't, or... So, it's just a bulk of just...
And any of those areas can be city limits if they vote.
Not, I mean, not in time for this one.
Right. But if those areas ever wanna be part of city limits, they have the right to vote themselves in.
I don't know. No, I was just questioning, because it limits a lot. I mean, you're looking at, it's gonna be a certain group of people, and that's great. I mean, I'm hopeful. I'm just saying that it is kind of, it's one of those things we have set on a little bit.
There's no way you can make it fair for...
Yeah, there's no way to make it fair.
And that's the reality of it.
It's just kind of that little setting thing. I feel sorry for landlords or people with lots of property. And they don't even have their homes rented out right now because we don't have people coming in. We have a lot of jobs lost and people moving away. And I see that, and I see that maybe being an effect for the go, to-go now more. I know a lot of people wanna guess, a lot of people wanna know, I want a pool, but I see that. I don't think it's gonna affect me. I mean, I, that's twice eating out for my family, so I totally cut that out. I'm just gonna be honest right there, that for me. But there's a lot of families in our town that are poor, and that really does affect their budget, and I know it's hard for us to see that, but yeah, they run, you know? We have a school system that has, we're poor. I mean, we have a lot of poor income. But I'm just saying, I just see it as, you know, as what I think somebody mentioned earlier, kinda the landlords and the bigger businesses is gonna affect. We're gonna see that trickle down to those families that don't have that income, that those rates are going to raise, and that might be where your effect is come August on your vote, because you're gonna, that's where it's gonna affect people, right there. Not a lot of us, because we are very blessed and we're able to come up with it. There are a significant amount of people that aren't here tonight.
Our...
Or, and they're not property owners, and that it's gonna end up going back to them, and they're not gonna be able to find it.
The fair way would be a sales tax, 'cause it would split it most equitively among everybody. But here's the thing, you add a half-cent sales tax, you're hurting those families just as much, 'cause the price on the food's not gonna go down, it's gonna go up with the sales tax. So, I mean, it's, it's half a dozen of one, six of the other. The other thing is, is if you go water fees, if we tack a fee on like we did with the streets, you're looking at the same thing. We're hitting those families with $10 a month, whether they can afford it or not, or we'll turn your water off. We don't wanna do that.
So, let's move this along.
Sorry.
I do wanna get to the, the, let me get to the last agenda item, and then I'll met my obligation as the mayor. It's the same discussion. It's the same discussion. That's right there. So, it's, this is a public hearing regarding the Alva Public Swimming Pool located at 1402 Flynn Drive for public hearing regarding the swimming pool project. And just as a reminder, it's redundant because the other one was required for the grant that we're applying for. This one was already scheduled, so... Lenny?
Why do people wanna come and live in Alva? Why did I come back from Arizona? Well, I had family, roots, all that type of stuff here. If you look at the communities in northwest Oklahoma are most areas, most communities are dying. Now, I have problems with this scholarship of power of 200, 400,000, whatever you're giving per year to the college. Like, that's affected the employment. College kids are not really going out and applying for local jobs, but that's another issue. If you don't have a swimming pool, that's another mark of a dying community. Your property taxes, if you go, I mean, I could've gone to Albuquerque, I could've gone to Phoenix, you know, where they have 20 movie theaters, they have 1,000 places to eat out that are not all Mexican. And those types of...
Already is.
Types of opportunities. But if you lose the pool, you're going to lose a valuable asset. If we didn't have the college, we'd be like Cherokee. Let's be honest. Property taxes, if you have property, $100,000 home, which would be a shack in Phoenix or Albuquerque, you're paying several thousand dollars a year in property taxes. Our property taxes compared to other places is extremely low. Now, I've got a relative here that's concerned about property taxes. I'm retired, no kids, no dependents, all that kind of stuff. You probably have my vote, but I don't know how you're gonna reach out to these other people, 'cause they don't see the property taxes as a fair way of taxing.
I think one of the ways we're gonna have to reach out, and most of you...
I think one of the ways we're going to have to reach out, and most of you can know me, I'm not a Facebook person, I don't have a Facebook. I think we've got to get true information out on the Facebook and quit slamming different items and different issues. We need to be truthful, we need to be positive for Alva. A new person that's looking for a town to move into and they get on and they see all this negative stuff about Alva, why would they want to come here anyway? Let's be positive about it. Guys, I can tell you, we have worked our Talinsky's off trying to figure out the best way to do this. I wasn't in favor of this kind of a tax. I was in favor of the sales tax, but then I got to looking at it, it's going to hurt my grocery business if we do the sales tax. Because we've got to come out. Everybody's going to pay more on their groceries. And you guys know groceries are already expensive. We're losing people going out of town on the sales tax. We've got to be positive, guys. Whether you want the pool, whether you don't want the pool, be nice. Just be nice.
You know, I...
All the amount of prayers.
Sorry. To say, I came out and said, when this whole process started, and even like she said, we've been working on this for a long time, this started back in August of last year. So we're almost a year out at this point to when we started this process. And there really has been a lot of thought and a lot of effort and a lot of research that has gone into it. But when we sat down at our budget hearing, you know, I sat down and said, absolutely, I do not approve taking on any more debt of any kind at that time. Because I feel like we've done a lot of that in trying to improve our infrastructure, primarily our water infrastructure that was largely backed by our rate increase. And there was a lot of discussion about that. The reason I'm okay with this particular measure of funding is exactly the reason that it sunsets. It goes away. It's temporary. Whereas all of the other types of funding we have out there, they don't sunset. And to me, that was really important.
And you can't sunset a sales tax because it's so volatile that we could say, we're only going to tax you this half percent or three quarters of a percent for 10 years. And what happens at the end of 10 years, we haven't paid off two and a half million dollars? We've got to find another way to fund it or we start cutting city services. So we're pretty slim on city services now.
Yes. We're working on that too.
I have a point that nobody else has really brought up. Given that it's pretty late in the summer and like you said, you know, there's administrative things that need to happen, you need to do bidding, a lot more estimations and things like that, that's, you know, realistically, we're probably months out before we have a solid package handed, this is the plan. Funding is irrelevant at this point, I'm just talking about just the plan. Building the pool and the bathhouse in six months for opening day next year, I'm going to be real, I'm going to say that's awesome. If there's a construction company that can do it, I would gladly like the proven rock.
We only have to do the pool.
Whatever. Okay. Is there anything that would prevent us from saying, okay, guys, next year, we'll close, we're going to go ahead and secure funding, have a two-year plan to just do the pool and say, okay, I'm sure that, you know, admission costs for the pool probably not factored into this, that's irrelevant. Kind of as a compromise for, you know, if the property tax thing comes through, let's say it does, you know, that hundred thousand dollar home, that's a hundred dollars a year. What if first year that opens, we say, okay, free admission for the first year?
There's all kinds of...
I mean, those are, I'm not saying that's the rock, you have to go, but what I'm saying is, I mean, you know, realistically, opening the pool, I don't know what day it opens. Let's say first day after school or school's out. You know, that's a slim chance. And I mean, we can just be real, there's a lot of moving parts that have to happen. What's the... So is that something that could, this could be restructured to say, okay, this is a two-year or a three-year plan, or this year we're going to do the pool, next year we're going to do funding for this after this year. I mean, have a five-year plan. We want to do a lazy river, we want to do AstroTurf, we want sprinklers to shoot rainbows. So we could do a multi-phase plan like that and secure funding responsibly, but I know sales tax isn't the way to go, property tax isn't the way to go. There's no right way to go. Is there a way that we could just say, okay, in two years, this will be open, we're going to secure funding this way so that it impacts people the least? And the reason, and the reason I bring that up is because if we do property taxes, there's going to be rent hikes. It's a matter of fact. If your landlord says, well, okay, I'll just go ahead, you know, I'll just go ahead and eat this hundred dollars, you're going to run out of business. I mean, no offense to you, but it is, it's a proven fact. If sales tax happens, property tax, its adverse effect to all these other things, it's just chipping away at the top of the people. Is there, is there some kind of a compromise plan that could be multi-phase and like I said, first year everybody gets in free. This place can go crazy.
So you made a couple of points. With regard to the timeline, no. Health department says no. Has to be two years. We've got two years to complete this plan. Now, we can add more lazy river and year free and stuff like that, but the pool and the bathhouse have to be completed in two years. So that's not our call, we don't have a say on that. If the contractors don't get it done, we don't open. That's the bottom line on that. The, whether they're liable for it or not, if they're not done, we don't open. As far as the rate to, rate of admission, it's 19,000 dollars a year. I, you know, in the scope of this project, my opinion, and it's not that I'm, you know, one to just say 19,000 dollars isn't a lot of money, because it is. But in the scope of this project, if that was a concession that people wanted to hear, you know what? I don't have a vote, but, I've got a vote in the election, but I don't have a vote in the council. I, you know, it's, it's a conversation that can be had. I don't know that everybody's on the same page with that though either.
Well, I know what you're saying. I know that administrative, admission costs aren't factored into this. I mean, that's, that's a business decision.
Because that doesn't even cover what it costs a pair of lifeguards.
What I'm saying is, you know, if...
Well, at one time, when some of the organizations in town, because there was a few years that was free, or that somebody bought season tickets or... It wouldn't take much for...
Like a lot of these guys were in high school, elementary. They were there. PTA, PTO, we donated tickets, we donated season passes to everybody. And it was great. It was awesome. It was great. We had more kids out here and I mentioned that to Lincoln School this year and their fifth graders, I believe it was, got, fifth grade, got season passes.
APS, as a reward for their accelerated program...
Accelerated readers.
...had given the students a season pass.
Right.
The public school system had awarded students for receiving or for achieving their reading goals annually, season pass.
So I, grandson in fifth grade...
And I can state as a fact that 10 to 11 year olds, which is the fifth grade demographic, is the majority of our population on a daily basis from Tuesday through Friday.
And he said, in May, he said, Grandma, am I going to get to use my season pass? I said, I don't know. You know, as, but they want those season passes, so that's definitely a possibility.
Sponsorships, so...
Sponsors, we can get sponsors. There's a lot of things.
Alabama Conrete sponsors this, they donate the labor to do something or...
Question in the air.
Yeah, to leave what Mary was saying earlier about the city and people talking on Facebook. I think that within like last month, the city of Alva has started updating things on their Facebook. And it's just started whenever this discussion started. So maybe if we could do that a little bit more and be more transparent for the people instead of having meetings and not letting us know what's going on.
Let me, let me respond. Could you, could you state your name for the record for the...
Sam Felton.
And I'll speak, I'm not going to, I'll speak for myself. You don't know how many meetings that Marion and David Peggy sit with the council members and those are the only people that show up to hear what's going on in the, in city council. So we, we conduct our business and we wonder if people even care about any of the things that we're doing. Now, and don't feel sorry for us, that's not what we're seeking.
Please don't.
But...
You what?
But we have meeting after meeting after meeting where nobody's there for public comment. And then nobody's, nobody inquires about anything that's on the agenda until after it happens. And so, you know, we, state requires us to post and we post according to state requirements and it's, it is what it is. A lot of times we don't have an agenda set. Look at how many things were on this agenda tonight. We conduct business once a month. If we put that agenda out two weeks prior, it's going to change before the end of the, the Friday before the meeting on Monday. So, so we have timeframes that, again, I don't want you to feel sorry for us. I want you to come to our meetings. I want you to come to our meetings, I want you to listen about what's going on, I want you to, if you have something to say during public comment, I want you to say it. I want you to also understand open meeting rules. We can hear what you have to say in public comment, we cannot have this dialogue. So the best way to have this dialogue is to get to know these people.
Come visit me.
Come see us. She's at the grocery store.
Call me.
I'm at the nursing home. You know, we've all, we're available.
Facebook messages, email us, all of that is all in the... I can tell you that I, I can tell you that I expressed my concern about the lack of communication coming out as well. That was a concern that I had as a council member, that communication, there was not enough information getting out to citizens.
I think that the perception has been that if we're only meeting the minimum requirement of posting, posting it on the window at city hall, putting it in the paper and posting it on the website, whatever the minimum is, that's what we've been meeting for a long time now. And so I think that people have felt and the perception has been that if you're only doing the minimum, you don't really want us to see it. Because I get calls woke up with windows.
Where else do you want us to put it?
Facebook, Facebook's been huge.
What I think I hear, and I've heard it, and I don't disagree with it.
Council said it.
I don't disagree with it. We do have to do a better job of the things that we know are going to be on an upcoming agenda, letting people know that they're going to be on an agenda. Now, I, you know, that's a promise that is hard to keep, but willing, that I'm willing to make.
That's appreciated.
I mean, and that's all I can say. I mean, it's a hard to keep promise, but I'm willing to make it and do my best to try and keep it.
And I can also add that how we are now doing our agendas, one of the things I really love about how we're doing them is they're so easily accessible to the public now as long as we have an internet connection, which if you don't at home, we have a library. And I think that, I think the link is on the city's website now, Devon, for the town cloud where all of the...
Yes.
And you can actually go through and review the same thing that we sit down in our committee meetings, our council meetings, all of it.
That's why I was telling you about, go online and look at all those reports.
In the spirit of the open meeting, we're off the agenda.
Yes.
We hear you though. Anything else with regard to the bond issue or the pool project?
Yeah, my other thing was that she said that 10 to 11 year olds are what comes here. In a couple of years, they're going to be teenagers. And this doesn't look very teenager friendly. It's not a big swimming pool, it's a lot of shallow area. What are we going to do to teenage a bit?
I looked at, I looked at it as being actually more teenager friendly than what we have now, personally, or actually more community friendly than we have now. Because it actually scales with, with the kids as they grow. So you've got the splash pad for the youngest kids and then as they get a little older, the middle area, which is the shallower end. And then that far end is actually, it's an Olympic sized pool from my understanding. With the, with the larger slide and the diving board and the area swimming. So I personally feel like it scales better with kids as they grow.
I was talking to a friend this morning, this afternoon, who, that's where I grew up and they had a pool in their backyard and you know what, when we were teenagers, it wasn't any fun unless we were jumping off the roof. We can't, we can't do that here.
Also, in a pool this size, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. In a pool this size, we're allowed to use pool toys and those kind of the blow up things you ride on and the tires and all of that stuff, you're allowed to use in this pool. I come from a small community that had a small swimming pool. You weren't allowed to use those kind of things unless it was a private party. So having, this is awesome for me, coming from a small community, moving here two years ago, this is, this is awesome for my kids. They love this and they are teenagers now.
And I don't think you'll have any concern with that. That'll still be, because Suzanne, don't you change that? Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Cindy Wright. We talked about that Cindy, about activities in the pool. But at the deeper end, we can see where they can do things with the older kids. We talked about the younger kids up here, you know, if the little kids are on the splash pad. We've really tried, it's got to be accessible to where a wheelchair person can come in on the stadium. But there's going to be room for everybody to play. And that wasn't my concern, I was just stating that coming from a small community, that we weren't allowed to have those things in the pool. And coming here, we're allowed to have those things. Yeah, I think you will.
Any more questions or feedback regarding the bond issue or the, yes, sir?
Well, the design of all this pool, I mean, this one's square, you've got three stands, lifeguards can see everybody. I don't even know what's on that thing right now. Is it the pool? It is the pool. Alright, so it's all curvy and whatnot? Well, you're going to have blind spots for the lifeguards everywhere.
Nope, the lifeguards go in the pool.
Oh, they go in the pool?
Oh yeah, they'll be in the play structure, the lifeguards can stand in the water.
Because I was concerned that you'd have to have more lifeguards to be able to visibly see the whole pool.
Suzanne, if they were to come wrong, but it's fewer lifeguards, right?
We currently staff 10 to 11 lifeguard. We have five stands at present. And that pool would probably require five to six. And when that happens, we have rovers. And so you'll see a lifeguard sitting in a stand and I do have lifeguards that sit up and they can see over because we have to see the bottom of the pool. But I also have lifeguards inside the pool. When I have a lot of swimmers, I make sure there's a lifeguard in the pool to make sure the bobbing heads come back up. But lifeguards are trained for moving bodies of water, they're trained for water parks, we're trained for everything, whether you can see the bottom or you cannot see the bottom. That pool is much narrower, the footprint will be similar, but that is more of a water park theme. And so my lifeguards are just going to have to be more mobile. You're not going to see them sitting very often, you're going to actually have to see them moving through the structure. And depending on the types of slides that we have, that structure, there's a play structure in there at some point, there will be a lifeguard inside that structure. So right here in the very center, we'll have a lifeguard station inside that structure. But we'll have lifeguards positioned in areas. And the way that we position lifeguards, there's a zone. And so we have overlapping zones. So we would position a lifeguard here, they overlap and this is their site. And then we have a lifeguard that would be over here by the slatter and they would have position. So if you've noticed that we don't have guard stands quite spotted out yet, because we are going to have to assess where our traffic will be. And depending on where the traffic is throughout the day, we move our lifeguards around to make sure that our swimmers are safe.
Could you state your name for the public guard?
Suzanne, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm the manager. Sorry. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Suzanne, you're the word.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the bond issue, the grant or the pool project? Well, I do appreciate everybody coming out. I hope that, like I said earlier, that whether this is your preferred option, this is the option that's available, this is the option that when we vote August 13th, it'll, it'll play a large factor in whether or not we're able to open by next May. I hope that you can look at this from a standpoint, it's not, is this exactly what I want, but is this something that I can live with? And vote accordingly. If it's not, you don't need to support this. If it's something you can live with, the plan and the financing, then a yes vote would allow us to proceed. If...
Up to you.
It is, it's, the council, council could have done things that didn't require any input from you. But that's not the way to do this. We need your approval on this vote if you're okay with, if this plan is acceptable. If this plan isn't acceptable, there's gonna have to be a lot of, a lot of extra figuring, and it may not even be possible. So, I, I, cuz we've crunched, we've tried to figure that out too.
My thing is, I'm gonna take out that little toy there. That's gonna save us fifty or sixty thousand. There's things that we're gonna try and argue out, but we're gonna try and make the pool work.